Good evening, everyone. Let's go ahead and call the meeting in order at this time, please. Please turn all cell phones, electrocetic devices to off or on vibrate at this time. And Mr. Phillip, will you please lead us in our prayer and pledge of allegiance, sir?
Father God, we are so grateful for your many blessings. We are so grateful for your love. I pray that you will guide us today, help us to make decisions in the best interest of the citizens of Ballenger, and within your will. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, sir. Right, consider approval of the minutes of the November 7th, 2016 meeting. Is everybody at that time in review?
November the what?
November 7th, 2016. Did I say it wrong?
No, probably heard it wrong. I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the November 7th, 2016 meeting with corrections as noted.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address the council on any subject at this time. I don't think anybody did a sound on the engine. Alright, discuss and take action to count the ballots cast for the November 8th, 2016 city official election. Any questions? No? No questions?
I received a report from Julia Miller. It shows in place 3, 66 for Robert Daniels, 65 for Joanie McBurney. In place 4, it's 95 for Daniel Fisher, 79 for Landy Kason, and 127 for Elogue Fenton.
Have a motion to accept the canvas of the ballots.
Aye.
Second?
My second motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Consider a resolution declaring the election results to be correct. That's what we just did?
Mm-hmm.
What did you do before that?
You counted.
You counted them and then you already declared.
I was gonna ask a question, but I didn't get a chance to, but yeah, we knocked both out.
Okay, that's what I was asking her, see, and I. Alright, we're gonna do a session more right quick because we will do our newly elected officers here shortly. But before we do that, we want to recognize and present to Mrs. Joanie McBurney for her outstanding honorary, just great service, from May 8th, 2010 to November 8th, 2016, in appreciation for your outstanding service on city council and commissioner, senior member district number three. This is from mayor, council staff, citizen, city of Ballenger, November 21st, 2016.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is also. Come on, we're both y'all.
Get a better look at what was asked, Sam.
Yeah.
And then you see you got there. What's that like, what do you say?
This.
And that's my, thank you. Okay.
And we got one we won't believe in it. Why not? So let me smell papers.
Okay.
You know what? Like you said.
Stay around while I read. Ah, come on.
Thank you, Joanie.
Come on.
Thank you.
Nobody can keep you out anymore.
Hey, now you'd sit in the audience sooner.
Yeah, I can give you a lot of audience, right?
Are you a moron?
Huh? You know. I have to now.
Isn't it?
Thank you.
Okay. Alright. Oh, come on, there was one. Alright. Newly elected officers will be administered the oath of office by the city secretary. What are you gonna do, though?
Aye.
Which way you wanna face?
Okay.
Over there.
That way you can get.
Right there, right there.
I'll teach y'all to raise your audience and repeat after me. Aye.
Robert.
Do solemnly swear.
Sowndly swear. Sowndly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Will faithfully execute the duties. That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Office of.
The office of. Don't enter city council, senior member district.
Three.
City council of district, or district four.
Of the state of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my abilities.
Will to the best of my abilities. Will to the best of my abilities.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The laws of the United States and of this state.
Of the United States and state. The constitution and laws of the United States.
The constitution and laws of this state.
This state.
So help me God.
Congratulations, both of you.
Alright, consider setting the time and place for the regular and special council meetings. Is everybody okay leaving it where we have it, or is anyone gonna change it?
I'm good with two minutes.
Thank you. Considering the time and the place of regular, special council meetings.
Regular meetings are first, third, and I did.
First and third.
First and third, right here at 5:30.
Should we all have enough on your agenda to have two meetings or not?
Normally, yes.
If we don't, if we don't have, probably we don't have time.
Thanks, Phillip. And Justin.
There'll be some meetings that will be in one direction on, like for example, you wanna meet January 2nd.
Oh, okay.
We'll have to move on every day, but it's always been one day.
Okay, thanks. Alright, motion to continue at the same time and place, 5:30 on Mondays.
Make a motion.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Right, consider setting the salary for the mayor and commissioner of the council. It's not much, that's all you get. No.
I make a motion we leave it as is.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Twenty dollars a pick six.
I'm standing right at the dinnertime. Alright, consider appointing a mayor pro temp. Currently, that is Ms. Darlene Kelly. And she has done it, she's done well doing it.
I can understand that, then.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed? That's good. Alright, discuss and take action to appoint two members to the city park board. Do we have any? Do I have that? She's on pause right now, y'all, 'cause she'll come back in a minute.
For one time, we'll need to take over.
Second?
Oh, you know.
See, they told us.
I did. I need to tell them I'm stepping down.
Yeah. Aw, man. You on table, we'll come back to it, 'cause it's gonna be better in about 15 minutes.
We just want you on table. City Park Board, please.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Discuss and take action, consider amendment to the animal control operating policy. You should have some of that in your packet. The chief and officer basketball here to explain and answer any questions that they have on there. Does anybody have any questions? I have a bunch. I know there was quite a few at first.
Some under this, I guess it's page three, stray meat and dog, okay? Under documented animals for breeding, and I had to reread that about five times because of periods put in there. I hate to be picky, but if you read that first sentence, under documented animals for breeding, edit section 6-5-0. All dogs and cats, they shall be spayed or neutered. If an animal is not spayed or neutered, documentation has to be made to specify that animal being breeded.
I understand, have a few slip of comment there, sure would be nice.
Okay. Say this is a rough draft. I'm addressing the situation, 'cause my animal control officer has to put in new policies.
Okay, that's minor. The $10 per dog or cat is stretched yet?
Um, that's on the top, and as, probably you have black and white, I did have it in red. And the next paragraph states for non-spayed or neutered animals, saying that they have to have some type of breeder license or papers on the animal to specify that it's for breeding. This will help on the stray animals, animals at large. A lot of the animals that we have to deal with are heat. And so therefore, if you have a female animal that is running loose, and you get five males, that one runs loose. And so every time an animal is in heat, we're chasing the dogs around. So if we get any animal that's not specified for breeding to be spayed or neutered, that will cut down a lot of it. Because you have somebody that just goes and buys an animal, they don't wanna breed it, they just want it for their purpose only, and they don't wanna breed it, and therefore it starts running loose, and everybody else has puppies, and it continues on.
So it's gonna be illegal to have dogs not spayed or neutered?
Right, unless they have papers.
Unless, unless they have.
As far as breeders? Not far, you know, papers on the animal.
Registered papers?
Registered papers.
Registered papers. Are there, okay, red certificate? So there's standard sets of registered paperwork for?
There's different types of organizations you can register your animal under to get the proper documentation for breeding. I know, what's that called? AKC is one of them. I mean, there's.
Do we need to specify that maybe?
There's so many out there, that's why.
I'll probably just go on the internet and go.
Yeah, but there's an organization for heat and breeding.
Oh, really?
And each crossbreed and everything like that, so therefore it's hard to narrow that down.
Yeah.
That's, that's why I put that one.
And Mr. What's his? He wanted to make the point, he said that you could just go on the internet and say, I wanna, you know.
No, I'm not saying you could use that legally. I'm just saying I'm pretty sure I could find the certificate somewhere.
I'm pretty sure. But you have to, it has to be approved, you have to bring it.
You know, and a lot of, a lot of the organizations that are able to get papers, you have to pay money for.
Well, another way to accomplish that, through that whole thing, is you have to price that non-spayed or neutered dog to where, if you're gonna breed it, it's gonna be expensive. I mean, so if you want to make it $50 a year, if you don't wanna spay or neuter your dog, you gotta think about that.
Yeah, and it's, looking at.
But all my dogs are spayed and neutered, so I don't.
Looking at San Angel, Abilene, they're up in the $50, $60 range.
Yeah, I wonder if we don't do that, and accomplish things.
Not that good. You know, that's why I'm just bringing this up.
And that's an annual fee, separate?
Yeah, there's an annual fee.
And that's for non-neutered animals?
Non-neutered animals, yes.
But they're neutered, rabies shots?
Yeah, I mean, when they get registered with the city, they have to have their vaccinations, rabies, all the other whatever.
So this is all in addition to what we're already?
Hmm.
Yes, sir. This is an attempt to control the dog population?
Yes.
Dog cats?
Dog cat population.
I'm more cats than dogs.
Which there was another one that I found for cats, is a catch and release program. If we catch a cat, you know, instead of killing it, we pay the cost of spayed or neutered, and release it back. And that's what Angel does. And it keeps your rap all down, I guess. Yeah.
Keeps your snake problem down.
Keeps your snake problem down a little bit. But it's not in there, but it's one thing that I've considered. So, the main thing is, is the exceptions to the pit bull. If you notice on there that putting in a definition for pit bull dog, which lists different breeds of pit bulls, and that it is in there, and it's a prohibited animal, under the speculations that you follow by the guidelines to keep your pit bull mix. Which basically means you have to have a secure confinement with two feet under the ground, so high, or a roof on it.
Basically quarantine.
That's basically quarantine. And of course, you have to have a padlock on it, a sign saying beware the dog. You know, if you go walking your pit bull, that's a leash, no longer than four feet on it, and if it is aggressive. Does state in there that you have to have a muzzle on it? That's just the wording I got from the examples I put together, so.
Okay, but if we specify only a pit bull has to follow all these rules?
Well, the pit bull.
Definition of pit bull dog.
Yeah, the definition of pit bull, which is bull terrier breed, Stanfordshire, American pit, American Shepherd, Mastiff. I'm not gonna say this other one.
Aggressive, colonial.
That one.
That one.
Yeah, it's a very big dog.
Well, Mastiffs are big, but I've never known them to be aggressive.
Yeah, well, we had one incident where there was a Mastiff and a pit that killed, how many goats? Seven goats?
Killed four goats and two sheep, like one.
Yeah. So, and both of them, well, one of them split down, the other one was exiled from the city animal.
Well, they are protected, I mean Mastiff is made for being protected with farm and ranching, so.
But both animals had blood on it and killed.
And every dog was out of the game?
They're just as good as how they're trained to.
That's what I'm saying, animals like people have to be raised.
Yeah.
You know, we're specifying one certain breed, and we're gonna say all of those are the same. We can't say that about people, how do we say that about them?
Well, you know, you don't very often read in the papers about a black lab attacking three children. But I, it just doesn't happen.
Hey, I've been dead violent.
Well, that's probably your fault. But I'm gonna say in general, odds are, pit bulls are more aggressive than most of you.
Right.
I believe.
The reason why I was wanting to implement this, 'cause in my pit bull ratio to other dog bite, probably 60/40 on pit bulls, the 40 on pit bulls, the other dogs, and all other breeds put together, and then the 40% pit bulls and 60% all other breeds. And that's why I'm wanting to do this, 'cause we got, there's just way too many of these pit bulls in this town. There's too many of them that's aggressive.
Well, I know you personally don't like pit bulls, so it's just kinda.
I only pit bulls that weren't, they're the best dogs they ever had.
This came from a class he went to, which one was it?
Uh, the shooter don't shoot class?
Yeah, he went to a class shooter don't shoot type thing, where basically tells you, you know, the mannerism of the dogs and everything like that. And within that class, they gave example policies of a certain animal control issue, so.
Stay on the bottom of pit bulls, so destructive. You know, they break gums, they deep muscle injuries, all this benching and pushing them, they have powerful jaws.
That's, yes, sir, there's more of the problems of pit bull bite is almost twice as strong as any other regular dog.
It's a different bite, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
And you know, of course, when they bite down, they walk their dog, they don't let go, so.
Stan Fager, if comply will result in immediate removal of the animal from the city, what is it?
Um, not so much as an immediate removal, but more of a compliance, you know, I think it's, you know, if you don't comply with these, we're gonna take the dog, and we'll do what we need to do with it. So, I wanna say, we don't wanna mess with it, get rid of it, type thing. And that's what we've dealt with in the past, you know?
They have them, but they don't wanna deal with them?
Yeah. They have them on a show, or for protection, or whatever, they get loose, they bite kids down the road, you know, we have to quarantine for 10 days, they go see the judge, and they say, well, we don't wanna deal with it, they sign off the rights to the animal, and we destroy it.
That probably happened 75% of the time.
Yeah, with all types of dogs. Not so much pit bulls, but all types of dogs.
There's also a Class C misdemeanor involved too.
Yes, I mean, all this will pretty much be Class C misdemeanors, so to speak.
What's the next one of Class C?
$500, plus cross, I believe.
Plus what?
Plus cross. Of course, that's set by the judge.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's saved in the file.
Basically, this is all in addition to what's already had.
Yes.
Then where did we get this? We create it, or did we adopt it?
Um, it's pretty much verbatim that I adopted from Abilene, I believe.
Abilene, the same as, oh, there's another city that, uh, a whole part of it out of, that is already, and this, all this material's been, been in effect over three years in most of these cities, besides Abilene. I mean, besides San Angelo, I'm sorry.
And there's, the rest of it, pretty much is updating the animal control. One of the animal control strength, you know, you have a lot of animals, dogs, that are chained to trees, fixed objects. It'll be illegal to have them chained to a structure by rope, chain, whatever you wanna call it.
Pack in the yard.
And it has, it has to be in abandoned yard. I didn't want, you know, I think like you, at the middle of the night, you know, a lot of them, put their dog out for a couple hours and bring him back in, you know, we can put a limit on that. A lot of them I see, they put a two-hour minimum. You know, if your dog, if you go set your dog up on a chain for two hours a day, then bring him back in, that'll be okay. But if they're out there 24/7, it's not okay. So, there's a lot of animals like that, this is because no one's built against one. I can't think of anything else that's too major, besides updating, you know, the live trap definition was not in there. Enforcement for the police officer was not in there.
As far as y'all being able to enforce it?
Yeah, I mean, it's forced by the, there's a one in there to be for animal control to enforce it, but not the police department.
Correct.
But since the animal control is underneath the police requirement.
Yes.
We modify that. Other than that, I think that's it. And they're dealing there for live traps, you know, when necessary, the animal control officer will set live traps to trap news and animals, stuff like that. And they're placing there that the owner of the property has its own trap, is his decision whether or not to pick it up or not.
So the owners aren't allowed to do their own trapping?
Well, they are allowed, but it's up to him whether or not to pick it up and destroy it. So, pretty much safeguarded us from going onto somebody's property with their own trap, you know. They have their own trap, they trap their neighbor's cat.
Okay.
He knows about it, he can let it loose, you know, that type of thing, 'cause we run into that. Any other question, comments, concerns?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
If you're talking about the confinement here, that they, if they're outdoors, they have to be in a lock, pin, or kennel? So, if the people have a fence around their backyard, they still have to put that kennel up for the dog?
No.
No.
Well, the fence has to be of a certain height?
Yes.
And a certain depth?
It doesn't say that here.
My pop-up question.
It just says depth, it has to be two foot.
Yes, and I'm, as I was reading this the other night, I realized my mistakes, you know. You know, it has to have sides with a roof attached. You know, if you have a six-foot fence, that won't be in your need for a roof. So, you know, we put in there a height limit.
Correct. So if you have a four-foot fence, can we change the height? Then that citizen would have to change the whole fence for the backyard, or build one of these kennels for his dog.
What's your average height for a chain of fences or a property?
Right.
You know, I mean, if you have a small dog, small pit mix, I don't see it jumping over the fence. But if you have a full breed that likes to jump, they can jump over a four-foot fence, then I suggest to change it. So, and of course, all this in here, if, when you do get a license, either me, or the animal control officer, or the next chief, will have to approve of it combined. So, say you go get a pit bull, you know, we have to come inspect your property to make sure that it's in bounds. So there, there could be some leeway in there, you know, like.
You get a little pit.
Yeah.
Eight foot.
So you don't need to build an eight-foot fence with a roof on. But if we feel like that that dog, that dog will jump the fence in an aggressive manner to hit somebody or something, then.
Or it's an animal that you got trouble with that does jump.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of them can walk or crawl.
Yeah. So, I mean, any dog, if I squirrel, it'll jump the fence with a squirrel. You know, then it gets loose, then, you know, the kids are down the street. Wants to go play with the kids, kids don't know that.
True or false, for both of you guys? If we had more responsible pet owners, we would have fewer pet problems?
True. So, and as I'm interim chief, I'm gonna make sure, as, when I'm here, and hopefully further on down the road, I'm gonna make the animal control policy zero dollars. So Sam's hand's gonna be cranking, uh, in the day, writing tickets for this area, 'cause it's a problem area. We've been relaxed on it for so long, needs to be enforced, and all my, and especially with getting the enforcement in there, the law enforcement, my officers can write a ticket, Sam will write a ticket on the spot. We need to quarantine that, we're quarantining it, you know, until the owner comes and picks it up, at least.
60% of your calls for pits were pit related?
Forty percent of my.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
And 60% is all other breeds.
Everything else is them.
I mean, we can, we can discuss this more, I'm just bringing this to the table. Now, I mean, we can, we can discuss this more, I'm just bringing this to the table, so it needs to be addressed.
Is this a draft for us to modify and improve it all day?
Modify it, draft it, talk to me, you know, talk to Sam, you know, and we'll let it in front of the city authority and make sure everything's a good, and then go from there.
You need to take this from there?
Yeah.
All citations are gonna be allowed to go through cops here?
Yes.
For everyone?
Yes.
Times to go through the court, fees, the neuter fee or whatever the case may be, if they don't neuter the, the dog, and I'm assuming it's in the form of fine, the fifty dollars or sixty dollars or whatever annual, is that what?
Where up right now, it's ten dollar fee.
Yeah, but it's.
Annual fee.
So, you can go get the ten dollar fees that paid, that's paid for the court?
It's paid through the city.
Okay.
Are you taking me through the city or not, Aaron?
All right, motion is tabled, and the amendment to the animal control operating policy.
Make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You wanna jump back, okay, we're gonna go ahead and jump back up. And I need a motion to remove from the table, discuss action and appoint two members to the city park board.
Still do.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All right, the name, go ahead, sir.
Names are Lucy Hutchins and Hillary Bell.
Anybody know them?
I'm Lucy. Hillary Bell, B E L. That's a recommendation, I'll give it.
The only two they got. And these are replaced in Maryland and, uh, under the point of vacancy?
Uh. They're adding one to the board.
Okay. Oh, there are?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, motion to appoint two members to the city park board, Lucy Hutchins and Hillary Bell, have a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right, moving forward, discuss and take action on the request of Louis Phillips to purchase six lots out of block twenty-three of the original addition for a trailer park located in the two hundred block of Hutchins. I'm looking at Steve, is that fair?
I'm here with Drew.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Why didn't you tell me? I didn't pay for that one. So, you wanna go ahead and just reject it right now, so we can put it into administrative?
Yeah.
All right, motion to reject it, is that what you want? Yeah, he put through, but if we reject it, then they can't come back up from this, they go, they'll have to stall all over again. Or do you wanna keep it open?
Make a motion, we reject, uh, request of Louis Phillips to purchase six lots out of block twenty-three of the original addition for a trailer park located in two hundred block of Hutchins.
Second?
Repeat that.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. All right, discuss and take action to allow property improvement at five ten South Seventh, Lot Six, Block Sixty-three, original addition. Now, do you have it?
Okay, well, yeah, it's, uh, listen to these folks right here.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, that little building there, we did condemn a little building in two thousand and ten.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, it's not important to consider, but, uh, these, these folks here want to, want to talk to y'all about that little building.
Okay.
Is that a little rock one that doesn't have a roof on it, sitting on that corner?
Yes, yes.
That's, uh.
High rock highway.
Yeah. Which that, is that? She's pointing that way, you're pointing that way.
Going down that road and some of us.
Okay. You have to check it out.
No, no, I was gonna look at Drew or.
Okay. All right, y'all wanna address the council?
Oh, well, I wanna know if we could, uh, reinforce it and rebuild it again. It has a little lap on the, you know, like a, uh, what you call it, a cement, a piece of cement?
Okay, nice.
It used to be a little room there, but we tore it up, because it was falling down, and it had the roof, and we tore it up, and we just left the rock. So, we wanna know if we can reinforce it and rebuild it where that little lap is, cement, that's what I want to know.
Is that, is that in the flood plain?
Yes.
Yes. That's what I was just thinking.
I think, um, I can't, I'd have to look at the exact regulations, but I think we're limited as a council.
Right.
Because you can only invest so much money into a house in the flood plain, it's a certain percentage of the total value of the house.
Forty-nine, forty-nine percent.
Forty-nine percent.
Oh, the taxable what?
So, and that's not something that we set, that's just something that FEMA sets. Uh, so, as long as, uh, as long as it doesn't exceed forty-nine percent of the taxable value of that particular house, you'll be fine. But if it exceeds that, then we can get trouble for that.
Do we know what the taxable value is on it?
No, that's, uh, uh, probably what we need, uh, need for, for them to do is, uh, just go to the tax office. And, uh, I don't know if they have all the, the house and the little building all combined in one, but if they can break it down and give you a taxable value of that little building.
And they'll then.
Yeah.
Okay.
And let us know what it is.
Right.
So technically, they can't, so technically, they can't invest any more money in that than forty-nine percent of the taxable value of that piece of property right there, just like it is? Is that right?
Yeah. Now, now, giving you that, I don't know why.
If they, if they invest in forty-nine percent, let's say it's valued at ten thousand dollars, they spent five thousand dollars on it and made it nicer, the taxes go up, can they continue to sleep, modify it, that doesn't make any sense.
I agree.
We agree.
I agree with you on that one.
I mean, losing that, how does FEMA, how can FEMA juris, have jurisdiction over that right there?
Because it's in the flood plain. And the flood.
Because it's in the flood plain, and, and now we went to them and said, hey, we wanna change the flood plain, because we think they changed, because they've done a lot of work, you know, a lot of spread agents, a lot of other stuff. And they said, get out the checkbook, if you wanna change the flood plain.
Last process, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do a study to potentially change the flood plain.
Right.
Who we asked?
But there's no guarantee that they'll change.
But there's no, there's no guarantee, and most, most of the time, they don't change.
Well, our upfront cost was, was three fifty, we were told we could spend up to a million, and then we got the Department of Justice, he said, you know, basically, you'll lose money.
Because, I mean, to me, if a citizen wants to invest in their property, they ought to be able to do it.
That's right. And ultimately, ultimately, you'd be basically doing it at your own risk, so that's, that's ridiculous, who, who's, who's running this town, us or the part of FEMA?
FEMA.
We don't wanna come to that one.
Look like FEMA.
So, if, refresh my memory, maybe we'll need to answer the question. When Mount Pleasant was torn down and Jesus Christ Church went up in the same footprint of the old church? That doesn't apply to this situation?
No.
Commercial buildings have slightly different rules, I thought.
Yeah.
And it's a church in that much.
When they built, yeah, when they built, uh, when Longy built that, uh, these little tiny shops down there, he had to, he had to meet certain regulations, like his sheets had to be so far off the ground and that kinda thing, but he could still build there. Uh, but, but for, for whatever reason, commercial's different than residential.
Well, that was all before, Bob, uh, they were having, uh, they had no regulations on the flood plain where they were down. Well, they were permitted, though, if they go up in the same footprint.
Down.
But it may have been like, uh, because it's, because it's a church, you know, not residential.
Yep.
I think a lot of this is a result of hurricanes and everything else, flood and associated with that, rules keep getting more strict.
But anyway, like I say, the little building being condemned, you know, so.
I don't think I've come to as long as we've been gotten.
My recommendation would be just to find out how the tax office has it written up and find out if it should walk the little building for. And just kind of open it up.
Condition that it meets FEMA guidelines, regulations.
Yeah.
Chase that house and then come back to that.
No, I mean, I think we'd give, that's pretty clear, guys, I'd suggest something.
I mean, we've lifted it up for this long after it was condemned, so.
Well, as long as they meet FEMA guidelines, I mean. Make a motion, we approve the request, uh, for the property improvement set, uh, filed to South Seventh Street, uh, as long as it meets FEMA guidelines.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all right, discuss and take action to consider the recommendation of applying and zoning of two variants requested for Jeanine Roberts at seven oh one Country Club Avenue, Park of Sixth, Block Sixty-one, West Ten Edition, and Quali Quarles at thirteen oh eight Broadway, Lot Six, Block Thirteen, Lot Three, Three Edition.
Okay, that, uh, the sheets that I gave you, just trying to go over, that's, that's the same thing that I gave the P and Z Friday night. Uh, just that, this brand, this, this is what the variants is in conflict with, but the P and Z approved it, both of them, the announcement, so.
So, there's different, uh, mobile homes in.
Travel fivers.
Travel, travel.
In travel fivers, in our one.
Quarles is in the, uh, in B one, business district one, and, uh, Roberts would be in the other one. And as you can tell, they're gonna be working on their houses, and, uh, they're, they're asking for our variants to live in these travel fivers while they're working on it.
Could they give a time limit at the P and Z?
Six months. The variants are six months, and at that time, they'll be inspected, and, uh, we could, uh, give them an extension.
They have to repile and go through the same process again if they wanna continue, but they have six months to get the work done that they requested.
I don't know why I couldn't do that, she said no. She didn't just say no, there's another one.
Any other questions, concerns about it?
I don't know that I have an issue with it, since it's only supposed to be just temporary.
Correct.
And that probably brings up all the rules that we do, do need to write something like that in, because if somebody's building a house, they're gonna, they, they wanna put art in there while they're working on it, I mean, there's nothing wrong with that, I mean. Now, does that thing sit there for six years? Probably not, right?
Well, that or what Steve's concerned is when they buy the property, then they move into that stadium and they'll build something, and then they'll, they don't need that. Or it's older than any of them.
Well, as long as we limit the timeframe.
Right.
Yeah, and that, and that's one of the issues, uh, that we just passed, they're, they're both over ten year old, both tried, you know? And we just passed that about two months ago, that you can live in one end of the city that was ten years old.
Yeah, but this is temporary, so.
Yeah.
But would that open up a can of worms for somebody else to come in and say, hey, he's got this trouble for this guy?
That's why you have the variants, because what you do is you put the code out there, and then you give a variance of limited size and scope and personnel to basically say, this rule doesn't apply for six months to still mark who lives at one, two, three Main Street. And P and Z has to approve it, and ultimately, we approve it. But you don't wanna put it in there as a code that says, hey, you can live in there for six months at a time.
Yeah.
So, the variants, what it does is it allows the city and the P and Z need to kind of, I don't wanna say control it, but it keeps it from being taken advantage of.
As long as our variances are always distributed.
Yeah, 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 and that's why you have a P and Z board to, to make some of those decisions.
I'll make a motion, then we, uh, accept the recommendation from the P and Z for those two variants to keep longer, and we support.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any? We're gonna have to, he has to cut it down.
Nobody wants to say this quarrel's first name. Come on.
Is that the actual spelling of his first name?
Yes, I saw.
I liked that.
He wrote it, how you doing there?
He wrote it?
He wrote it.
Oh, my God. Call the F O? All right, consider approval of the building permits, please, you should have those in your package as well.
Okay, student rental, twenty-two, our twenty twenty-two month rental, we want to build a one twenty-five or one twenty-five or eighteen foot metal building, steel building. Tom Chalice, nineteen thirty Hudson, wants to put in a, uh, eight by twenty foot, two eight by twenty foot storage containers, four storage buildings. And also, uh, Chalice at nineteen thirty Hudson's, uh, want to build a twenty-four by thirty-one foot by eight foot carport. The carports and the storage containers are out in industrial, and so it should be a problem to the, uh, out there.
Okay. Because I was gonna ask, don't we have to have some type of covering on the storage containers?
Where's that animal? About a half street from you. Maybe a catty corner. Everybody have a check out our eyes?
Yes. Motion to accept building permits as presented, please. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, give the city ministers a final report, please. Um, you should have a copy of the sales tax report, Bob, did you get a copy of this? We are at roughly twenty-three percent of our budgeted totals or participated budget, uh, for sales tax, two months in, and so that's, uh, that's not bad, we're one quarter in, and, uh, we've got another month to go. Um, we're on pace to break a million dollars again, sales tax, and so, I think that's, uh, an indictment of how well the local businesses are doing and the strong economy that we have in local, you know? We're doing really well, on that note, I'm gonna clarify something that was put in the paper. And I talked to Selena about it, someone put in that we had a three hundred and one percent increase in sales tax. And what she did, if you noticed, uh, in October, it went from forty-three thousand to a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And, um, I mean, the comptroller's office gives us, when you pay your sales tax, as, as every business owner knows, uh, it could be monthly, it could be quarterly, it could be annually. Uh, we don't really know when the quarterly's coming in, and so the comptroller never really gives us a heads up on that, so that hundred, three hundred and one percent difference was an indication of a monthly versus a quarterly. But even at a hundred and seventy-five thousand, that is a strong quarterly reporting, uh, for sales tax. If you notice, uh, February, uh, is always your biggest month, or historically has been your biggest month, that's when you get monthly, quarterly, and an annually. So, um, last February was a one sixty-seven, eight seventy-one, the quarterly for October was one seventy-five, five seventy-five. And so, um, that's a strong indication that, uh, our, our local economy's doing well. The mayor, I had drafted a letter for the mayor to sign, and we had sent to text ops, um, a week ago, uh, requesting a number of issues, one of which was gate arms right here at one fifty-eight in the rebel crossing, the arm bar. Um, we also requested another one in Eighth Street, and we requested some sort of signal system on Tenth and Thirteenth Street. Text op was out here, what day was that, Sunday, Thursday?
Last Wednesday.
Wednesday. Um, and, uh, inspected Tenth Streets of all intersections, as whoever, somebody in Austin literally looked at Google Earth, saw the map, saw three tracks, and said, Tenth Street's a dangerous intersection. They never looked at one fifty-eight. So Text Dot's out here Wednesday. We looked at the Tenth Street and I said, the problem is that way. We go down, we look at one fifty-eight and everybody agreed that arm bars need to be installed, uh, at some point. And so, uh, my understanding is they're gonna start the paperwork on that. Um, they told me six months, so in Text Dot fashion, something will get done in eighteen. Um, but I, I fully suspect there'd be gate arms on one fifty-eight. Uh, this is not for discussion, but this is just something to heads up I wanna give you guys. During that meeting, there was a conditional offer to the city to, if we close Tenth Street from Park to Railroad, that they would reimburse, reimburse us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars if we closed Tenth versus them closing signs and controls up. They also made the caveat that if they, if we close Tenth, that they'd put arm bars up at Eighth Street, right over here. So that's nothing, there's nothing for us to consider, but I definitely wanted to put that bug in your ear. You look perplexed.
We didn't close Tenth Street.
Don't have a, going all the way down because we lost some of the other streets.
There'll be like nine, Park to Railroad is basically curt and no access. Just like, what, eleven, twelve? Twelve. Yeah. So when we have something to consider, I'll bring it to you, but that's a, that was something that was, uh, pretty predominant, uh, in the conversation with Text Dot. Um, the other issue we asked for was essentially a permanent variance, uh, to do decoration, not decorations, um, benches, um, and trash receptacles along Hutchings Avenue. Um, that way, anything we put in this Text Dot rideaway, we're gonna give the permission. Um, that would help with some of the commerce up and down Hutchings. Trash receptacles would definitely help. There is no trash receptacles except maybe in the plaza and there's really nothing from Eighth Street to Ninth Street on Hutchings Avenue. And so, um, we thought, we felt like receptacles would probably help. Um, but to, to, for us to spend any money, I need a variance from Text Dot. The other issue, um, that we addressed in the letter was, um, a stoplight at essentially where Parsons Heating and Areas. I think that's F, is it twenty-one thirty-three street that cross, that crosses sixty-seven over by Parsons? Twenty-one, I think, twenty-one. Um, we requested a stoplight at F, at twenty-one eleven and sixty-seven. Um, as you know, no, no, months ago we had an accident. Fortunately, there was a fatality. Um, but that is a very dangerous intersection as traffic is, it's mainly downtown traffic. I think local guys pretty much know what's going on. But as you have traffic coming in from San Angelo, they don't really realize there is coming into their community, uh, especially when you have traffic leaving, they don't realize there's a Walmart and other things up there. And so, um, part of that request was also to do a study on the frontage roads, uh, in front of Sonic and I guess it's a Galler Health or the clinic or, or the pharmacy.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, to do some sort of egress study over there. Um, I don't know how that's gonna turn out, uh, but some of that traffic, uh, probably needs to be controlled. Um, the hospital has indicated they want to build a new facility over there and so that would, that's only going to increase traffic at that area. Um, as I said in the letter, um, once the hospital gets built, you're gonna have to put in some sort of stoplight anyway for EMT and emergency vehicles. And so, um, might as well go ahead and do it now. I'm not expecting them to do anything. There's not enough, what they consider a major incidence to warrant a traffic light as Stan and I have visited. Um, if we could get some speed reductions in, that would also help out significantly and maybe stem the tide a little bit. Um, the speed limit is fifty at that intersection and, um, we've had a number of complaints about people speeding through that. They're not actually speeding when they get there. I mean, unless you wanna start, you ever take it to fifty-two and fifty. It's fifty going through there and it may look fast and everything else and I'm sure Stan has some problems. Someone said it's in the top of the car and put the gun on. When they get into town, it's a completely different matter and we need Stan to address some of those issues. Um, any questions on the text dot? Okay. Uh, the brush truck, um, it is set for delivery for tomorrow morning. Yay us. Um, it is willing to get put to use tomorrow afternoon. Yay us. Um, if you did not know, the brush truck, the current brush truck that we have that probably needs to go away to brush truck heaven. Um, Ricky was driving it along, is it Ninth Street or Eighth Street?
Uh, no, I like the.
Hamilton, yeah. Um, he was driving along Hamilton picking up brush and through no fault of Ricky's, uh, because the hot dogs are so bad and the boom came up. And when the boom came up, it took out some Verizon's phone lines. Um, we got, yeah. He's literally driving down the street and the boom just starts going. Um, it's a forty-year-old truck as we discussed, and we'll purchase the new one. Um, the bill came in on that, I believe it was about eleven thousand. Is that right, Bob?
Yes.
Okay. I will follow that with insurance, I'm sure, but, uh, clearly that thing's not fit to be out on the street. So we will retire that and we'll have a new one in here tomorrow. Um, this is not on the agenda, but it will be on the December agenda. Uh, it's an engagement letter from Gala Fullerton. She's a CPA and auditor that I, I met with in Abilene a couple of weeks ago. I was very impressed with her. Uh, I was impressed with her knowledge of municipalities. Um, I'll have the engagement letter for you guys to review before council and if anybody wants to visit with me privately about that, I can. Um, there was one other, uh, suggestion that, that I, I vet out another auditor. Called him up. Um, he said he is too busy to take on any new clients at the moment and so maybe CPA must be good. Um, schedule for this week, obviously we are off on Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. And, um, there are no, I, I have no travel schedule between now and our next meeting, but I will tell you on December the seventh, Monday, which will live in infamy. Um, I have a meeting with Water Development Board on a rural study si- group symposium. Um, essentially, uh, Robert Lee called, asked me to come. Uh, an engineer came in today and asked me to come. They wanna get the rural perspective of why the state can't send money out here. And I implored them the last time I told the Water Development Board what I thought. That wasn't a good thing, but, uh, I'll be in love if I'm December the seventh. Um, I know there's something I'm forgetting. Yes, I did drive fourteen hours. Yes, I did go out. Yes, I did sit by myself. Yes, it was a miserable experience. Uh, yes, I think I saw my first damn body. Uh, so that is, uh, all I have. Any questions, comments, concerns, issues that I can address at this time? Nothing? All right. Thank you. Moving forward, hear request for future agenda items from city councils. Anything else we need to get on the agenda?
What did we say, uh, that the, uh? Earshut.
We did put it on the agenda for, for not, uh, we'll try to get it in next week.
I guess, I guess, from our perspective, would you get recommended changes and have a week to go to look at?
Yeah, well, the, the paper I gave you, you know, that's just ideas.
Yeah.
Those are already ideas.
Some of that is already, you know, there's a little of that's already in the code book and, uh, you know, just some things to look at and check. Uh, and the code book's gonna be a whole lot of out-of-control, uh, procedures, you know. It needs to be gone through a lot. Some of the stuff needs to be taken out, some needs to be added and it's, it's gonna be a long time.
And, you know, there's people out here in the northern town. I mean.
Yes.
Like they, their code books.
Would you like for me to give y'all a presentation on, or have someone come speak to us about codification?
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind doing that. For sure, it needs to be, it needs to be updated to this time.
Because the, the code book is redundant in several places and, um, it's hard, I mean, I can see Steve's point. It's very confusing because section one says you can do something. Section two explicitly says you can't do the exact same thing and so, um, it conflicts itself. Uh, it's ambiguous and it's not, um, it's, it's just a confusing document.
Yeah. I think we helped ourselves out and cut back a few details before getting that knocked out.
Yeah, but there's, there's a few things that I want, you know, I can go over with y'all, but they hope of them doing that and that.
You wanna add to it, subtract from it, either way?
No, probably, you know, it's, uh.
I figure by the time we get to you, you add to it, Steve.
That, yeah, it's, it's, it's possible. But, you know, that's gonna be an ongoing process. I'm sure, you know, that, that book is, that's it.
All right, enough.
And with that, and two, we have a, uh, the International Building Code.
Yes.
And, uh, the, uh.
What are we on?
Well, we're on the International Building Code.
Which version?
Uh.
Oh, nine?
Three. I told you, I believe. Yeah.
This should be.
And two, we're supposed to adopt the International Residential Maintenance Code. Supposed to, we should have done that, but it should have been done in two thousand and one. That's signed, that was signed out of government fair.
I'm on the electrical one way.
They what?
We're on the electrical one way.
Well, yeah, we're under National Electrical Code, yes. And Old Six Funnel Code along, you know, and, and that's, that's above our code book.
So.
I did get an idea for money making scheme with the city. We sold a building in, uh, New Mexico, Las Vegas, New Mexico.
No.
And they called me up and they said, you're not allowed to sell buildings in Las Vegas, New Mexico because you're not registered in the county. And I was like, what? Okay. Can you do that? And they go, yeah, we can do that. You need to send us thirty-five dollars. I had to send thirty-five dollars? So deliver a building to Las Vegas.
You had to send a money work, so they won't take checks.
Yeah, it was a money work. Yeah, I had given it to them later.
So you're saying that we should do that?
No. Yeah, cheers, Jim. Yeah. Crazy. Crazy.
All right, moving along. Valider City Council shall be in executive session is authorized by Texas Government, federal section five five one, not.